All right, it's five o'clock.
Okay, all right. We're gonna go ahead and call the city council meeting to order. Can have a roll call, please.
Mayor Parton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Here.
Counselor Harris.
Here.
Counselor Ellis.
Here.
Counselor Day.
Here.
Counselor Stokes.
Here.
Counselor Holloway. Okay, all right, we have a quorum.
Um, at this time, uh, we're going to, uh, have, or as, uh, as the presiding officer, have Mr. Bisset serve as our de facto, is that right?
Clerk pro tem.
Clerk pro tem. One day I'll get the Latin right. And at this time, do we have a motion to allow Counselor Stokes to participate remotely?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Counselor Day and seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner. Ms. Stokes, uh, for the record, can you state where you're conducting the meeting from? And the reason why, uh, you're asking to participate remotely?
Yes, I'm, I'm conducting the meeting from home. And it's for medical reasons.
Okay. All right, is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
One moment. Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yeah.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway. Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Motion passes. It should be a motion to name me as clerk pro tem.
A motion to?
Yep.
Okay. Do we have a motion to name, uh, Mr. Bisset as the clerk pro tem?
So move.
All right, motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner and seconded by Counselor Day. Seeing no lights for discussion, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway. Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Also, uh, Mr. Mayor, I believe there was to be a motion to rearrange the, uh, the agenda tonight slightly. To bring up, uh, the mayor's address. Sorry, excuse me, the, the city manager's address.
All right, is there a motion to amend the agenda to move up the reports of the city manager, uh, to after the information and presentation? Okay. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway. Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Uh, going into, uh, closed meeting, is there a motion to go into closed meeting, uh, pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A29 and 8, to discuss the award of a public contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the city's bargaining position and to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters? Uh, real estate contract discussions, unsolicited offer on city-owned real estate, Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8, uh, the Ari Hunt versus Hopewell update, and 2.2-3711A1, to discuss and consider personnel matters, including board and commission appointments, District 19, Hopewell Prince George Healthy Families, School Board, and Hopewell Redevelopment Housing Authority, and the city clerk position. I'll second it. Uh, motion's been made by Counselor Day and seconded by myself. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway. Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. All right, we are going to go ahead and come out of closed meeting. Is there a motion to come out of closed session?
Second that?
All right, motion's been made by Counselor Day and seconded by, uh, Vice Mayor Joyner. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis. He's still in the back. Counselor Ellis, this is the motion to come out of closed session. Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes, uh, you have Counselor Stokes.
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries.
Okay, uh, certification, please.
Pardon me a moment while I find my cursor. Okay. Certification pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3712D, where only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and identified in the closed meeting motion discussed in the closed meeting.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway. Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay. Uh, at this time, is there a motion to approve, or excuse me, to appoint, uh, Susan Gill to the District 19 Community Service Board, and Brittany Irving to the Hopewell Prince George Healthy Families Board? All right, motion's been made by Counselor Holloway and seconded by Counselor Day. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. All right, we're gonna go ahead and move right into our open meeting. We can call the meeting to order. Uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Here.
Counselor Harris.
Here.
Counselor Ellis.
Here.
Counselor Day.
Here.
Counselor Stokes.
Here.
Counselor Holloway.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay. Uh, first, we will have a prayer by Reverend Tucker, followed by the pledge of allegiance by myself. Uh, is Reverend Tucker? There you are, okay. Uh, please rise.
Let us pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we praise you and we thank you, dear Lord, for the gift of your Holy Spirit. Dear Lord, we thank you for watching over our dear city, Hopewell, Lord, and we pray that you would give courage, Lord, to our leaders. We pray for honesty, Lord, for righteousness, Lord, and for a spirit of unity, Lord. Touch them, Lord, and touch their hearts, Lord, for their hard times, Lord, that come upon us, which are difficult days. And, Lord, we praise your name and we ask, Lord, for your help and guide us as we navigate difficult waters. And we thank you, dear Lord, for the love that you shower upon us every day. May we continue to share that love one to another. Blessed be your holy name, oh Lord. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands.
We stand.
Nation of God.
And God. In the vision of liberty and justice.
Okay, uh, we've already amended the agenda for tonight. Uh, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Counselor Day and seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yeah.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay. Uh, next item will be the information presentations for, uh, Menal Utility Billing Presentation.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
We amended the...
Yeah, it would be right after this.
Very good.
We have copies of this if you would like.
Okay.
I need another one over here.
Yeah, grabbed the wrong one.
We've got it in here. Isn't this, we have everything.
Is this the same?
Is the same thing? Is, is this it? Yeah, we have it in our packets. Okay, thank you.
There we go. First off, um, my name's Kevin Marsnick. I'm with Menal. And with me is my colleague, Jason Brown. Um, and first off, I just would like to address the council and say, thank you for the opportunity to be here. And we really wanted to meet everybody and give you, uh, a nice 20,000-foot overview, a little bit on Menal, a little bit on the billing process, as well as the goals that we have, uh, developed and that we think we can carry out and, and really help your city, collaborate with, uh, your, your finance folks and, and make this program very successful. So, again, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Okay, so our first slide. Okay. Um, a little bit on the team, okay? The Menal team is based out of Dallas, Texas, or Addison, Texas.
Uh, I hate to interrupt you. Um, just 'cause I know that, um, our time limit's gonna hit up and we got some items. Um, do I have a motion to extend the meeting until we complete R3?
So move.
All right, motion's been made by Counselor Day and seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Sorry, just a moment while I catch up. Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway. Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, a- as I said, um, I wanna introduce you a little bit to the team, right? And just give you a, a, a little overview. Um, Jason heads our implementation team and he's gonna be very, working very closely with your internal people on gathering the information we need to do the sewer and trash billing. Um, the key, I think, point on this slide is just the, uh, amount of experience that our team has. Um, Menal has been in business for over 30 years in, in the US, over 75 worldwide. And we, we just have a really good team of people that know the billing, uh, industry and can do a successful transition. And, um, just has, we're not a new company. We've been doing this for quite a while. This is our core business. And, uh, this staff is gonna be working with Stacy's crew to do a successful implementation. So, that's the point of our first slide, the people. Our second one is a little bit about Menal. And so, as I said earlier, we're based out of Addison, Texas. We've been doing this for over 30 years. Um, we're a privately-held company, uh, based out of, out of Germany. It's a family organization. Um, and, and really, there are a couple of key markets that we focus on. And we started many, many years ago, um, in the sub-metering business for multifamily apartments. So what we would do is we would put sub-meters inside of apartments. We would read them remotely and then bill the apartment resident for their exact usage, right? And so, that is a big part of our core business, right? And our, our second market that we, that we got into was the Department of Defense. This was the, the military. And basically, what they did, guys, is they said, "We have some very bad housing that is in need of repair." And about 18 years ago, they decided to privatize it all, right? So, uh, when they privatized it, they tore down all the bad housing and built brand-new stuff, right? And Menal was a big part of that program on the u- utility side. So, many of the bases, um, on the West Coast, as well as the East Coast, uh, we have done the metering for, for water, gas, and electric. Um, so Fort Belvoir, that's one of our projects. The former, uh, Fort Lee, Fort Adams is, is, was a, was a project of ours as well. Um, and so, we have a lot of experience with the, with the military privatization billing. And from there, when we started to do that billing, we're like, wow, these are little cities. And that's what moved us into the municipal market, where we would help cities that need assistance with the whole turnkey process of sending the bill out, collecting the payments, um, issuing the money back to the city, all the websites, right? So that's kinda how, how, that part of how we got into the, uh, municipal sector, right? Um, we bill somewhere in the range of about 450,000 bills a month, right? Around that range, and that's for all three markets. For the municipal stuff, the military, and, uh, the multifamily. Those are kinda the, the keys. Um, and then the last thing I'll say is that our sister company is a company called Zenner. And I, I think they might do a little bit of business with the city. And we manufacture globally water and gas meters. So that's kinda the fit. On the, Menal does the billing side. Zenner, uh, is the producer of metering and AI systems. So, that's the overview there. This is the key slide for the council that I, that we really wanted to share with you. And, and that is, what is the value proposition that we wanna bring, right? And, and, and the first thing is, is really improving the customer service for all the residents in Hopewell, right? We really think that this is, this is key, right? And the, as I said earlier, we're gonna do the whole process, which includes the, the billing, the call center, the print and mail, the, uh, payments and collections, the reimbursements, all the reporting aspects that the council will need, right? We will handle the whole thing, right? Um, and then, the other thing that we talked a little bit with the finance guys this morning about is the collection piece. This is very important, that Ms. Stacy gets all the key metrics on a monthly basis, or a weekly basis, too. That the money is flowing back and forth. This is a very important thing. Everything we collect goes back to you guys, right? It's, it's a big part of our, of our process, right? So, today, we learned a little bit about their needs in terms of reporting and things like that. And so, we're, you know, each customer requires a little more customization. And so, that's what we're gonna do, you know, in that respect. Um, the call center, a very important part of our business. We don't have a lot of turnover with our call center, right? We, we put a lot of effort into it. It's key. That is really the conduit between us and, and, and your constituents. So, answering the phone in a, in a, in a quick time, resolving issues quickly. Nobody wants to wait on hold, right? And so, we really strive to make sure that that call center is, is, you know, processing people's questions and payments and things like that. And not everybody wants to talk to somebody. And so, we have some automated features that Jason is gonna get into, a little bit of how that works and how that can help streamline people's answers and, and resolve things, right? So, the last one is really the, the biggest one, and that's the communication, right? This is a partnership. We don't wanna do this for a year. We wanna do this for a long time with you guys. We want a long-term partnership. And what that really requires is a collaboration. That's why we're here today. We wanted to meet all of you guys. And if you guys have issues, you call, you call us, right? So, having good communication, having a good collaboration, a partnership, that's what we're gonna do. And we've kinda laid out a, a plan with, with Ms. Stacy's team on, on how we would like to do that with our weekly, monthly meetings and get everybody on the same page. So, that's the, that's the kinda overview of the company. Um, unless you guys have a couple of questions, we're just gonna kick it over to, uh, Jason for the process of how we actually do the billing. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Wonderful.
All right. It's like Kevin was saying, we do have a process that we use that, we pretty much goes for all of our clients, but we can curtail those or modify those to, you know, the specific needs of a city. But we start off with our implementations. The thing with that is we, like, we met today with Stacy to kinda go over a couple, you know, things that she requested or things that are issues now for the city that we can make sure that we develop a process that works for everyone, that, you know, gets rid of those issues that you have. But what we like to do is we like to meet with the city to kinda go through what the policies and procedures are, so that our call center knows, so that our team knows. If someone calls and they ask for a specific question, we know exactly what to tell them, so that they are all on the same page as what the city is. Those are not telling two bit, two different stories to two different people, right? We like to do an audit of all the accounts that you have before we set up, when we set up the first time, just to make sure that if, there may be something that we see that may be different from a policy or something that you've given us, but we wanna make sure that we work out all those kinks before we do our first billing, so that we're just all on the same page, right? We do a parallel billing to match the last billing that was done by the previous company, just to see that, make sure that we're, we're on track for what they were billing. Obviously, if things come up, that we would be different from them, but we would kinda catch those things in the very beginning, so that we're not six months down the road trying to figure out what might have gone wrong, right? Um, meter reads, we're not necessarily doing meter reads with you all, but we are receiving a file from Virginia America Water, which would be our meter reads that we're getting, right? So we base our sewer usage off of the reads that we get from Virginia America. So they have a process that works with us, where we can go and download those files from them. And we use that to import into our system for billing of the sewer. And we work with the trash company as well to kinda get, make sure that we're billing everyone correctly for that. Um, utility billing, like I just said, we, we, we will review the reads from Virginia America just to make sure that nothing looks weird, so that we can work that out before we send out a billing. If, for instance, if they have a high usage, we wanna make sure that we identify that and can bring it to the attention of, you know, someone here at the city or bring it up with Virginia America, just to make sure that that read is correct. And then, we always review all of our accounts to make sure that there's no vacant, usually just vacant accounts that aren't getting billed or that should be billed that haven't been showing up on Virginia America. Statements, we go through and we do modify our statements to match, uh, obviously have the logo for the city accounts, for the city on the, on our statements. And then, we look for any regulations that may be required, so that we're making sure to present all the information on our statements, for you all. Um, customer service, like Kevin was mentioning, you know, the customer service team that we have has very low turnover. When there is turnover, it's usually because they've been promoted within the company, starting from the company. Um, they all are full-time, they're all based in our Dallas or Addison office, so you don't have any outcalls to, you know, a different country or, you know, a different place that doesn't know, understand what's going on in the company. And then, we like to resolve all of our calls within one approach. So if it can be answered within one approach, we like to do that. If not, then we follow up back with the customer. Um, let's see.
Bi-lingual, uh, you know, we have people that speak multiple languages, so we've got that covered. Um, there's an IVR deal where it's an easy tree, where you could get to somebody quickly if you need to speak to somebody. Or if you don't wanna talk to people and you just wanna pay your bill or get a balance, we give that to you. So that, that's a, that's kinda a nice feature, right?
Right. And the city is assigned to the client relations manager in the very beginning, so that whoever our main point of contact is, is gonna have that person that will know what's going on from the very beginning. They have contact with them instantly, you know, they have their cell phone number, they have their office number. So they're always able to get ahold of somebody if there is a question or just communication. And like Kevin was saying earlier, we do weekly meetings in the very beginning just to make sure that everyone's on the same page, so we can work through anything that may be coming up. After that, we typically do like a monthly meeting with the city, just to make sure that all the communication is there, that if there's anything that's outstanding or a question that's had by one person or the other, that they just get resolved. And we always know there's a standing meeting to go through that. As far as payments, um, we accept all major payments. We do like lockbox, you can mail it in, you can pay, you know, ACH. We pay with a credit card, over the phone, you can pay with an electronic check. You can even pay at the city. We were speaking with, um, with Stacy earlier today. You know, we have it where someone could come in to make a payment at the city. They can go and log into their account and like, within five seconds, they can post that payment to their account. That account's automatically posted. Usually, all we just deposit the check that evening in a regular bank deposit. And then, the customer's account's already credited, you have the money for it right then. So there's no mailing in a check back to us to be able to process to that person's account. You're able to do it instantly through a system, so...
So we're gonna set that up with the Treasury Department, too, so they're not overwhelmed. But if people do wanna come in and make in-person payments, we give you that option. The idea is to make it easy for your customers. That's what we wanna do. Nobody's crazy about paying a utility bill. We get it, but we wanna, we just wanna give them really good service. That, that's the bottom line.
And then, going back to client relations, like I said, you are assigned a client relations manager. They're, they will be in the know the whole time while we're setting it up. And then, that's your constant point of contact if there's any issues or any questions that may come up. You're always, you know, in communication with them, you have a direct line to them as well. Customer ser-, what we do is if there is escalations from customer service, we always escalate within, before we go to the city. So, we have that set of policies that we know to go by. If, if a call center takes a question that they're not able to answer, we would escalate it to their immediate supervisor. And then, it would go to a customer, their client relations manager, just to see if they can resolve it. And then, if not, the client relations manager would contact the city to kinda work through that. That way, you're not getting phone calls from multiple people throughout the day, you know, for the same question or for multiple questions. We kinda like to funnel it so that there's not as much communication having to go to the city just on a day-to-day basis, just anything that would be escalated. And the month-end report, so, um, we do, so as far as weekly reconciliations, all the money that is paid to us, we reconcile it weekly, like every Friday or every Monday. We give you a report and we say, okay, here's all the money that was collected by, listed by us. We send it to you through a wire, so you have that weekly with the reconciliation of what those payments are. And then, we do a month-end report as well, which shows all the money that was collected during the weeks of the month. It breaks that down, reconciles it all, and then sends just basically an AR report to you. I mean, several different tabs in the report, based on the information that the city would like to see. But we do that monthly, end of each month. When we close out, we send it back to our contacts here at the city. It kinda breaks down all the payments, anything that's outstanding, any disconnections that were had, any disconnections that, you know, haven't been turned back on, just any payments and all reconciliation of all of that.
So, one of the other things, guys, that I wanna just bring up is, we, we wanna, uh, make this, uh, a good communication program to all of your constituents, right? Whether we, you know, maybe go through your, your web portal or whatever, but we just, we wanna, we want people to know who we are, that this is a legitimate bill, you know? And so, we're kinda brainstorming some ideas this morning on how best to communicate this message to your, to your residents. But that's an important part of it. Again, the theme of what we're doing is, is solid communication. Communication, collaboration. With that, we think this program could be successful. So, that, that concludes our...
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, are there any questions from city council? Uh, we have Counselor Holloway, and then Vice Mayor Joyner, and then myself.
Uh, thank you for your presentation. Uh, as we're looking up the information online, uh, do you have any, uh, stats in regards to your customer service reviews? Um, according to the Better Business Bureau, uh, when it comes to your employee rating with Glassdoor, and indeed, you're, uh, a little less than a, uh, three, uh, 2.8 rating out of 5. Uh, can you speak to that? Because overall, um, it's important in transition for the citizens to, um, have good customer service. Do you have any stats to speak to that?
So, thank you, Councilman Holloman, for that question. I, I'm not familiar with the rating, and I can kinda get back to you on it and give a little bit of a reply. But the, the key that I wanna say is that we are gonna be tracking metrics, uh, for you guys on exactly how many calls we took, how long they, they are, the good, the bad, the ugly. I don't care. We're gonna, we're gonna share this information back with you guys, so you can kinda see, these are the amount of calls we can't, I don't know, we could probably tell who called in.
Right.
I think we can, but the main thing is metrics feeding you guys information that says this is how it's going so far, right? From what we've learned, from, you know, the first due diligence to your question of call center, there's, there's a lot of calls coming in for your size, right? And so we're gonna have to add some people to do that, but we think we can bring call volume down by giving them the tools, doing the online billing, and, and, you know, just working with them month by month. So to answer your question, I don't, I'm sorry, I apologize, I don't have that Better Business Bureau rating, and we can look into that a little bit more. But what I can tell you is that we're, we're gonna track this, and we're gonna give you transparent data on, on what we're getting, and then you'll evaluate us and say, hey, Kevin, this is what you guys need to work on, or, you know, we're gonna give you the metrics.
Thank you for your answer to this kind of regards, but in, in making a determination on whether or not the company, or when the company comes in and how it is when you're working with the city. This is the reason for my questions.
Yeah.
Not necessarily just limited to the Better Business Bureau, but with your customer service or even your clientele, like working with the municipalities and so forth, I'd be very interested in getting that information.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely, and we can, I'll give you my card, and we can talk further about this, you know, get some more.
Thanks so much.
More detailed info.
Just to add one point to that, I mean, we do have access to, when we do have customers who may complain or, you know, for various reasons, we always have access to those calls. So we're always able to, you know, if we wanted to send a call to somebody, you're able to hear the call that ha- actually happened. You know, sometimes, you know, one story may be different, slightly different from the other story, you know, good or bad either way, but we do give you access to those phone calls, so we always have access to listen to those phone calls, you can hear both sides of the conversation, so those are always available to you all as well.
Yeah, and, and to another point, because that's a good idea, you may have some ideas, you know, in your own personal life, dealing with customer service and what worked and what didn't, or what your constituents are telling you. I'd like that feedback. We don't have all the answers, right? Every, every, everyone's a little bit unique and different, right? And so this is not gonna be perfect, guys, it's gonna take a little bit of time, and we're gonna have to work with you, but we'll be back here, right? Talking to you, getting your feedback, and that's what I could promise you. So I'd like to hear your ideas, some might be like right on spot, maybe others aren't, but let's, let's talk about it, right? Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor Joyner, then myself.
Right, I was wondering how many municipalities you actually serve?
Right now we have six.
Six.
Six different ones.
And how long have you been servicing those municipalities?
Our oldest one, we've been since 2016, that's the City of Torrance.
And that's what?
City of Torrance, California.
Torrance, California, okay.
And they have like thirty-six thousand monthly accounts.
Okay, okay. And what are your collection rates, I mean, how do?
I don't have the exact numbers here, but I would say they're in the upper nineties.
Okay.
I mean, ninety to ninety-five probably for the majority of them. I mean, different municipalities have different, you know, ways to increase their collections, some people do liens, some people are able to disconnect the water themselves, so it kind of helps with, you know, the ones that are able to do more, the collections obviously are better. The ones that we might just bill, you know, trash to, sometimes it's harder to get people to pay the, you know, we do work with the city, we do have several, we do auto dial calls to help people, to remind people that their payments are past due and things like that.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Question for you on payment methods. Does your company allow you to actually like pay in advance, and then it would be credited to your account, and then you wouldn't have to pay next month if it was, or it's just a reduced amount?
That's correct, so if you make a payment, you can prepay on your account, so it just sits on your account as a credit.
Okay, because I know there's some citizens that like to just write, you know, one check forecasted out, and that's a good.
They receive a statement each month, but the statement would show what their credit balance is on their account.
Okay, great. Also, at your call center, will your call center specialist be able to take information from a senior citizen to set up like automatic billing?
Yes.
Okay.
He's consistent with that, yeah.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Is there any other questions? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all both very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to our agenda amendment for the reports to the City Manager, Mr. Rogers.
First of all, Mr. Mayor and Council, I'd like to acknowledge Chief Greg Taylor and his team at the Hopewell Police Department for being recertified by the National Association. Great teamwork, I've been through certification process in several cities, and it's, it's hard work, it's not easy. They, they come take onsite and visit and talk to people and, and really determine if what, what they say in the application is true, so congratulations on doing that. Secondly, I would like to announce that I have elevated Chief Financial Officer Stacy Jordan to Deputy City Manager. In addition to retaining her duties as CFO, Ms. Jordan will assume oversight of the Department of Public Works, the Hopewell Water, our Renewal Department, Department of Recreation, and other departments and functions as required by the City Manager. She's gonna be a busy lady, and I told them to get ready because this is, this is how city managers are made, you know, you broaden your base. She has a solid finance base as, as, as we've all seen of her work on the budget and, and on the audits that she's been here, she's, she's been a tremendous asset to the city, and we're pleased to have it. I'm very pleased to work with her and to pour into her by experience and, and, and help her become the local government professional and leader that, that she wants, wants to be. The other point is that I'm, this is third week, I think, and, and so I'm still snooping around, trying to understand how things work around here to we, so we can get to a cadence of operation for, for all staff. And I've said to staff that I believe in boring government, no drama, let's just get it done for the citizens. That has been my reputation, and I'm going to work with the department heads and all staff here to be the best public service professionals possible, so that we can give excellent service to the citizens of this community. That is our promise, and we will be open and transparent, and we will communicate with Council and make sure that your issues are, are heard and understood by the staff so that we can implement. So the word is execute. Execute, and that's what we will work on.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
And I'd also like to take some time to address some concerns that citizens have brought up at our previous City Council meetings about the termination of two of our employees, that they were without justification, and that we did not provide our public with that justification. The first thing is that some citizens have complained that our decision to terminate their employment was without cause. It is true that we did vote for termination without cause, meaning only that we voted to award these employees their contractual severance payment, instead of accusing them of any misconduct and withholding severance. It does not mean that their termination was without reasons, and that Council had reasons for this, and that every member discussed this for nearly four hours during the February 12th meeting, and also subsequent meetings. And while Council would like to share those reasons with the citizens for transparency, these are personnel matters for which these former employees deserve their privacy, and it is that reason that we cannot publicly discuss these issues. Okay? We're moving on to our communications from citizens. Mr. Bissett, will you please read the statement?
A communication from citizens period limited in total time to thirty minutes is part of the order of business at each regular council meeting. All persons addressing Council shall approach the microphone, give their name, and if they reside in Hopewell, their ward number, and limit comments to three minutes. No one is permitted to speak on any items scheduled for consideration on the regular agenda of the meeting. All remarks shall be addressed to the Council as a body, any questions must be asked through the presiding officer. Any person who makes personal, impertinent, abusive, or slanderous statements or incites disorderly conduct in council chambers may be barred by the mayor from further audience before counseling removed, subject to appeal to a majority of council. See Rules 405 and 406.
Okay. All right, do we have anyone signed up for tonight?
We do. Apologies. We have four people signed up for tonight, the first is Alec Shul.
Council. Nice seeing all of you again, I've been here once before, I know some of you, I've talked to some of you, I own a business in Hopewell, I own Hopewell Pawn, Loan, Liberty Firearms, and Surplus. Been here for seventeen years, I've serviced this city for a while, I've gotten along with my clientele. Currently, I have close to four hundred and fifty people that are in pawn, over twelve hundred items that are in pawn. I do anywhere between about thirty thousand to about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a month. That's my averages throughout the entire year. I have recently been asked to leave my piece of property. It's not my property, it was the owner's property, it was sold to somebody else, with objections with the way that they had handled certain construction, as well as the contracts that they had given me to continue at their place, their building. I have looked into other buildings, I have looked into other properties around town, and I have found one currently. It is the old Foodland, that is at 705 West City Point. It is currently zoned B2. I'm asking the Council to look into it, to see if there is a way that I could possibly get a variance or maybe rezone the property to B3. Currently, a pawn shop is only allowed to be in B3, I could run my firearm store out of it, but that's a retail store, that's a standard retail store. With me being asked to leave, as of June 30th, I'm going to leave a lot of people without their products, a lot of people without their items. I have currently over three hundred lo-, um, layaways in my store as well too. If they do not get them out before the 20th, I will have no way of getting it back to them. And by Virginia law, and with the Council as well too, knowing your own regulations with inside the Council, I am not even required to give back anything at this point, once I've told my clientele that I've left. I probably will be approaching you in the next couple of weeks, if not within this week, to see if there is some way that we can come to an agreement where as I can get a variance, because I would like to be able to move into a larger building, which this is. I would like to fix it up, which I know Council has been looking into for a lot of different districts, a lot of different wards as well, to fix properties up, to move in viable businesses as well too. And like I said, I have been here for seventeen years, and I wish not to go anyplace else, but this is one of my last choices that I actually have at this point. Thank you for listening.
Can we ask you to leave your information with our City Manager?
Sure.
And so then that way, our Director for Development and Planning, and also, well, very, well, our Economic Development Director's here too, that they could work with you on this, because it would be great to have, you know, a business expanded.
I had talked to Mr. Ward as well too, so.
Okay.
And he basically, I couldn't get on the agenda for this meeting, and that's why I did it as a sign up, but he basically had talked to me, asked me to talk to City Council and tell them what some of my concerns were and ask for a little bit of help, because that's what I'm doing at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With apologies on pronunciation, I believe this is Ripley Blue.
Hi, I'm Ripley Blue from Ward One. I want to, first of all, congratulate the new City Manager. Fantastic introduction, and I really appreciate the, the tone that you're setting here and the promise that you're giving to the, to the community.
Thank you.
Secondly, I'd like to also comment on the speed zone reduction that's, we are now seeing on Route 10, which was, has been in place now for about a month. I've only seen enforcement of that over the last week, and just driving around two or three times, I have seen four police cars speeding around, you know, going after people. And so I'm glad that there's some enforcement on it, but I wonder whether it might be more effective to actually have speed cameras. They are a good source of revenue for the city, and, you know, the police don't have to go and chase these guys because they're going forty-five miles an hour, and I have not seen the trucks slow down. So I really think that we do need to make sure that people understand this is real, it's there for a safety reason, and I applaud the city for moving forward on that. And finally, I'd like to comment on the really terrible behavior that I saw from speakers here last week. I urge the Council to enforce their 405 and 406 restrictions, use your gavel, and stop people from making threatening and obnoxious comments, personal comments to the Council. Thank you.
Okay.
Mark Burrows.
My name's Mark Burrows, Ward Three. First of all, I'm one of those annoying and obnoxious people that this gentleman just spoke of, and I challenge any of you to try to strip me of my voice, because it will not work, I promise. First, I'd like to state that I don't know if the decision to fire the City Manager and clerk was rooted in racism or not. I'm not in your heads or your hearts, but I will say the optics aren't good. A lot of this chaos could have been avoided by starting the process with the speech that you just gave, Mr. Mayor. Had that been done first, a lot of us would have gone into it with a little bit more open-minded, as well as not casting a vote to rob us, citizens of our voice, by continuously censoring us and using the law enforcement as your shield. I would also like to state that two of the councilors here had conversations with me after the last meeting, and they've both gained a little bit of respect from me since they were willing to answer my questions and provide some understanding to me. So thank you both, I mean it. Where the hell was I? That being said, I'm still in awe that some of you feel like you deserve a seat up there. Don't get me wrong, I do appreciate the good that you do for our city, but it seems as though the negative overshadows the good. It seems as if some of you continue to do what you want instead of what we need. I would like to see the Council remember their purpose, to serve us people, you are not in charge of anything, to include these very chambers. You are merely our voice on issues, you all need to take a good, hard look at yourselves in the mirror and assess if you are serving us or your own or your puppet master's desires. I will not sit here silently while some of you, some of your decisions bring harm to our city. Lastly, all of the protesters, you are welcome to feel free to come out and support our children's sports teams or Boys and Girls Club, or just to participate in the Community Cleanup Day. Come show that you actually care about our city and not just being part of a news clip, become part of the solution that this city needs. Thank you.
Travis Burrows.
I'm good, keep covering Brian with the say too.
That's all we have for sign up.
Okay, thank you. Moving into our public hearings, we have our first public hearing, which is the second reading for fiscal year 26 budget adoption, Ms. Jordan.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of Council. Tonight is our second reading on the fiscal year 26 budget. The first reading was conducted on May the 13th, we also had our community budget meeting on May the 20th. We have our total fiscal year budget at two hundred. We have our total fiscal year budget at two hundred and twenty-two million, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, five fourteen. General fund at seventy million, five eighteen, zero sixty-eight. Some of the highlights from the proposed budget include class and comp implementation for public safety as well as recreation, three percent state funding COLA for social services as well as our constitutional officers, as well as a three percent city funded COLA for city employees. There was a five hundred thousand dollar health car in cost increase that was absorbed by the city. Quatics program manager, assistant city attorney, as well as three firefighter positions was newly added for the fiscal year twenty-six. School operating fund is level at thirteen point five. Mandated services for social services of CSA has also been funded. We have limited CIP, but we were able to pull together about six hundred and fifty thousand as well as two hundred and fifty thousand towards our reserve. There is also the budget resolution to be adopted tonight for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, budget for the city of Hopewell.
Are there any questions for Ms. Jordan before we open up the public hearing? Okay, uh, hearing none. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. Uh, Ms. Bassett, do we have anyone signed up for the public hearing?
We have no one signed up for either public hearing.
Okay. All right, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this public hearing? Okay, seeing none. Sorry, where? Oh, go ahead. Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, Mr. Bassett, I sent an email out on May thirteenth, asking for my email to be read. Did you receive it, sir?
It was, it was handed up at the, on the dais on, of the night. On the night of it was handed up.
Do you wanna rethink that answer?
It was handed to me on the dais of that night.
Would you like a email?
Ma'am, is this on the?
May I?
Is this on the budget hearing?
No, sir, it's not on the budget hearing.
Okay, um, I'm sorry, but we, this is strictly for the, uh, budget hearing that we have for tonight. That was, uh, should have been done during the communications from citizens. But if you can, um, just give them, uh, to Mr. Bassett, and then we can, you know, see what your comments were.
So can I not speak at the council meeting tonight?
You can speak on, uh, either one of these public hearings, but it has to be comments on the actual public hearing.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Normally y'all are, normally at, at the end of the signed up citizens, y'all ask if there's anybody else that would like to make a comment.
Yes, sir.
And that was skipped tonight, so is it not reasonable to ask, to allow her to, or allow what she's got to say?
Only because I was not here in time to, for the, to sign off.
For the sign in sheet, okay.
Yes, sir. And he is correct.
Is councils, everyone all right with giving her three minutes? Okay, all right. All right, go ahead.
Okay. So, Mr. Bassett, may I ask, would you like to see the email that was, that it was handed to you prior to the, to the meeting?
Yeah, I, sorry, I can read it. Ma'am, I, I apologize. I, I, I was handed your statement, it's the one I'm thinking about at the beginning of last meeting, we simply ran over time.
And it was allowed extra time for the, to allow people to speak?
For the third.
But this was through an email. I was not here because of a medical issue, so this should have clearly been read, because the mayor did ask you, was there anybody that had sent in any emails for you to read? And you said, no, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I think this is, I mean, you.
This is for you to decide.
Yeah, I mean, you can read the email.
Okay.
You have your three minutes.
Well, actually, I don't have my glasses, so I really can't see it, I apologize. But if I could, I would like, like to give it to the, Mr. Bassett, so you can read it. Or I can give it to you, and you can read it.
I can go ahead and read it. Thank you very much. Uh, I can read it. Okay. My name is Karen Thayer, um, Ward Seven. During the last meeting where the mayor and vice mayor, uh, Counselor Ellis, Counselor Day fired our city manager and city clerk, I am now asking that the mayor, Vice Mayor Joyner, Counselor Ellis and Counselor Day to be resigned or removed from their positions from the city of Hopewell. They are continuing to put our city at risk. They continue to make decisions that Counselors Harris, Holloway and Stokes would not be a part of. That is a lack of transparency. We as the people have a right to know exactly what they are doing and every conversation they have concerning Hopewell as a whole. When the mayor and his pos believe that they are above the law and ignore the law, that they need to be removed from office. The mayor and his pos, uh, believe that they have the right to make decisions concerning Hopewell and their wards, however, they continue to make decisions without other constituents. This is not only inappropriate, but also racist, because they are not allowing other constituents whom are black to be involved in conversations or decisions. The firing of the city manager and clerk have lost the citizens of Hopewell more, not only because of the replacements of them, but also by lawsuits that are brought against the city of Hopewell. How does the mayor seem to think Hopewell can afford to pay twenty-one thousand dollars a month for the new interim city manager and what is reasonable for their removal? We as citizens, to date, have not received any answers to these questions. What exactly did they do wrong, especially when the new interim city manager made slightly less to the Mrs. Manker's report? To me and many citizens, we don't see if slight changes are being done, then it's obviously that Mrs. Manker was doing her job and doing it well. So tonight, I am asking for the mayor, Rita Joyner, Ronnie Ellis and Susan Day to resign or be removed from their positions. They are incompetent racists and obviously have made it clear that they can and will make decisions on their own and without transparency.
So, Mr. Rogers, if I may, I would like to welcome you to Hopewell, but I would also like for you to understand what you are working with, and what our citizens of Hopewell are complaining about. You want to show us transparency, and that's all we've ever asked from these people. And we applaud you for that, and we hope that you will stand behind your word, because we're not getting that from here. And I only opened my hands so far.
Your three minutes are up.
Welcome again.
All right. All right, so moving on to our public hearing, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. All right, is there a motion to adopt the fiscal year twenty-six budget, um, budget resolution as presented?
So move.
All right, motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner and seconded by Counselor Day. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis. Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Oh, yes.
Counselor Oats, excuse me, Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, uh, moving on to our second public hearing, Ms. Jordan?
Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Can we amend the title of this to say, amend chapter thirteenth of the city of Hopewell code instead of tax rate ordinance, please?
Can you say it again?
To amend, um, instead of saying tax rate ordinance, it's an amendment to chapter thirteen, thir- thirty-four of the city of Hopewell code.
Okay.
Can we do that without a child change?
She's just asking for the agenda item to change a title, that's all.
Oh, I was confused the way she asked, I didn't mean it.
No, no, you're fine, yeah, substantively, it's not changing.
Okay.
So this is an ordinance to amend chapter tw- thirty-four taxation of the code of, uh, Virgi- code of Virginia city of Hopewell code, in regards to adding the tax rates within the code as, um, required, so that the city does not have to adopt tax rates every year, unless they are be, to be changed.
Okay. All right, are there any questions for Ms. Jordan?
Discussion, yeah, um, why won't we do that, though?
So we do not have to, um, approve the tax rates every single year, uh, Councilwoman Stokes. So this would change the, uh, city of Hopewell code so that the tax rates are included within the code. Most of the localities have it written within their code as well, but the city of Hopewell did not. So we're trying to amend the code, so that moving forward, any changes would just have to come before council if we decide to change the tax rates in the city of Hopewell.
So you're asking us to amend this tonight, just on the dime?
Say it again, I'm sorry?
You asking us to amend this tonight with just that statement?
Yes, ma'am. It's just changing the code of the city of Hopewell to include the tax rate within the code that already exists.
I, I hear you, but I don't, I've never understood any city to change a code without some discussion.
This, this is a public hearing for tonight, ma'am.
If.
Okay.
If, if I may, I, I might be able to shed some light on this. So, in looking over the city's code of ordinances, uh, which is, which is sort of the, the compiled public facing code of, of the city, we noticed that there are. Go ahead. This, this, my, my computer's listening to me.
Oh.
It's trying to be helpful. Um, apologies, that threw me off a moment. Um, so, our published code of ordinances has places where the tax rates are either not given, or even places where the tax rates are, are out of date. So even though city council each year adopts tax, various tax rates, um, the most easily accessible place for citizens to see what their tax rates are are showing the wrong numbers. Um, and so this, this is primarily an effort to, to get that squared away. None of these rates that are published in this proposed ordinance are different from what city council has adopted. These are precisely the same tax rates that city council has adopted for the upcoming year.
Okay. Does that answer your question, uh, Counselor Stokes?
It does, but it doesn't make me feel comfortable. Um, I would rather, I mean, it's just, unless I missed something in another meeting, and you all already had some prelude that this was coming up, um, it's cold turkey for me, so I would like more information. I, I hear you, but I would like to see and know for myself.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Holloway?
I was just about to s- speak to the same fact, that it's things like this that cause issues. Now, in this case, um, I would agree that it is, it is necessary, but again, I'd agree wholeheartedly with Counselor Stokes as into the understanding transparency. A lot of these things that are happening are already pre-conversed, um, even as a city council member. I hear through the grapevine, as my grandma would say, about the next moves that's happening, but, you know, but we don't even hear these things as a city councillor. Uh, I heard from constituents that the, the madam was being hired in her place. So self the same when we bring things like this, um, some know, but there's no prelude before, and I think that it should just be, uh, particularly dis- discussed, but in this, in this case, we understand this, because some of those things have been brought by, but I, I agree in statutes of law that that should happen.
Can I just say one thing? It's just really a cleanup of the code that already exists. So council.
No, I'm, I'm quite aware of this one.
Okay. It's not to change anything. Yeah, it's just cleanup. Council adopts the tax rates every single year, but the code has not been updated to reflect what has been adopted. So this is a cleanup process, to make sure this is actually what we adopt.
I think it's untimely, and it should be tabled for us to review and come back, so that we'll understand what you understand. All right? That's just all I'm asking. You, you know what you want done, you see a code problem, but never present that until now, and then you ask us to vote on it? I'm lost for that, I don't like that. That's not, that's just not good business.
Okay. We're going, oh. Oh, okay. Uh, sorry, I thought I heard someone over there saying something. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. Uh, we don't have anyone signed up for this public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this public hearing? Yes, sir.
This is for the amendment to the code, correct?
Correct.
All right. I'll be the first to tell you, I don't know a dead gum thing about budget. I'll be the first to tell you, the reason I, the, the reason I'm not running for your seat is because I don't know a dead gum thing about a budget, so I'll, I'll admit to that. What I do know is that everybody needs an opportunity to, to review, amend, edit, any code that's going to affect the citizens of this city in any way, shape or form, to ensure that there aren't things, and nothing against you, ma'am, I don't know you from Adam or Eve, but to ensure that there's nothing embedded in that code that could be used against the citizenry later on down the road. So.
Okay. All right. All right, go ahead.
Darlene Thompson, Ward Six. I understand, but I don't really understand, um, why it is that every year you all have a first reading and a second reading during the budget period. And the bills and all has already been sent out. It happened last year, and it has happened again this year. We have already received our real estate deals, but we are having a second reading. It seems as though you all really need to clean up your house. You have now, like they said, they're paying an interim manager twenty-one thousand. Now they are bringing Stacy in as a deputy. Just e- everything. You all, y'all done the same thing with Manker. Y'all brought her in as a IT director, and then next thing you know, you're fired. I don't know what y'all plans are. I don't know if y'all trying to show that we are still bringing blacks into the position, so we are not racist, but this is almost like a stab in the back. Stacy was assistant two. She was the CFO of Dr. Manker. Now she is almost taking her position in helping, uh, your interim manager. Okay? This is just, you all just continue to put knives in our backs, and doing exactly what you all want to do. And you all sat there with your stone faces, as if you all haven't done any wrong. I can see through you all, because I don't miss my city council meetings. Stacy was the same one that caused the city treasurer to be, to be arrested, thrown in jail for three days. It was her that filed those charges. Now she is interim city manager, without you all seeking for someone else to even be looked at. Y'all gonna bring in an assistant city attorney? He is only working four days a week, getting paid a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, but now getting a interim at a hundred and fifteen thousand. You all just spend our money any way you want, it's no transparency, it's not going to be. I, I wanna trust you, sir, but you are here for a minor period of time. This city, the corruption that goes on, our tax dollars that's being spent, any way that you all want to spend them, without no oversight, we have no say. So, y'all budget went from seventeen thousand to twenty or twenty-one thousand, million, I'm sorry, million. Y'all budget went from seventeen thousand to twenty or twenty-one thousand, million, I'm sorry, million. All on the backs of us citizens that had no say so.
Ms. Thompson, your time is up. Thank you. And go ahead and close the public hearing.
I would like to speak.
Is this on the topic?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, counsel. I wanted to simply-
State your name for the record, please.
My name is Natalie Hoskins, and I'm here because I want to support Dr. Menker, Brittany Williams, and I want to reiterate and ask, why does it seem that the black-
Excuse me, is this, uh, related to the amendment of chapter four of the city code?
It's related to what Counselor Holloway brought up. I wanna ask why it seems that the black city councillors don't get the same information that the white city councillors do.
I'm gonna ask you again, is this related to amending chapter thirty-four of the city charter?
She's referring to what I said about it.
Yeah, this, this is not, has nothing to do, that's a personnel-related issue.
No, no, she, she's making a statement about those two people, but she, she just reiterated that she's specifically talking about what I talked about about the read in regards to the information not being received on the ordinances and so forth before we make these decisions.
You have to keep your comments germane to the public hearing.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and go ahead and now close the public hearing. And is there a motion to approve the amendment to chapter thirty-four of the city code as presented?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I would, I would like to amend the motion. Is that one of order?
No, you can make a motion.
Can I make a motion to amend um, that we table this so we can get a better review and understanding of what she's asking?
Yeah.
So that would be a motion to lay on the table for the, for the day.
I'm sorry?
It would be called a motion to lay on the table for the day.
So your motion is to delay this item to the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, motion's been made by Counselor, uh, Stokes and seconded by Counselor Holloway. Is there any discussion? Counselor Holloway?
Yes, uh, and for the, uh, public, is there a specific reason why this would be, be a problem to table it until next meeting? Ms. Jordan?
Since we adopted a budget resolution, I don't believe it will because the budget, budget resolution talks about the rates within. We still have to make sure that we update our ordinances. Our ordinances should match what is, what is provided on our city's website. Now, this was provided in the agenda packet. Um, I think Shaw they put out the agenda Thursday last week. So it's been in the agenda packet.
The, the, the adoption, but the information.
The information has been, it's just a order, it's, it's just a-
It's in there.
Didn't get that particular piece, uh, that particular set. I, I don't have that in my package that, let me see that.
Um, I believe it might be page two oh five because I pulled mine from the agenda.
Yeah, it's, it's not in my, it's not, it's not in my.
Do we have anybody that can do the controls here? Can you try to go to page two oh five because it was included?
Yeah, that's going to take a moment, but I'm sure I can do it.
Sure. So my question only at this moment is, is the a- a- a agreement of the information was presented but just as the citizen has spoke about, is ensuring fact, and unfortunately, everything is happens all the time. We don't have everything that's presented. And so my question is, will this cause any other issue or delay?
It may cause issues in regards to the commissioner of the revenue being able to bill.
By putting this resolution, why, why is that?
Because she needs to make sure that she has the ordinances and everything matched, what is, what are we currently billing for. That's the issue. Council has been adopting tax rates every year, but the ordinances in the city have not been being updated. So this is a, a hu- a housekeeping thing to update, which I have already passed year over year. It has not been updated. If you go to municode online and go to the City of Hopewell, all of our codes are there. They have to be updated as you adopt certain things throughout the, this has not been updated.
That, that's understood. I understood it when you were saying it the first time. I just wanted to get the clarification to the citizens on whether or not this would hurt if it's delayed or not.
No, we can do it in, on the next meeting if need be, but it's just, like I said, it's just a housekeeping thing that needs to be done. Because your ordinance should, should be done as you adopt stuff through council.
So, what, Counselors, um, part of the reason for the timing here is, is getting these updates to municode so that they are in time for their, they only roll out publications four times a year. We're trying to get these to municode so that they can be published timely. Because again, what we have right here is a situation where the, the, the tax rates that apply to citizens are not being reflected in the place where the citizens can see what their taxes are. I mean, we have areas in the code ordinances that say outdated numbers for the taxes.
I understand all of that. It's just the timeliness that you are presenting it to us in an open, public meeting and asking me to vote on something, and all of a sudden I'm called off. God. Um, I would have wanted the information in the me, the right to this meeting. And I think that's only fair to ask that you table it in case I have some questions. I vote on it tonight. What, regardless of whatever questions I have as a councilperson, is ridiculously no good. But I, I mean, I hear you. I know why you said it, and it just seems like something you're slipping through, and I haven't had a chance to review it.
I, 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 I withdraw my second, uh, with the additional comment that, uh, uh, I'll state and vote to this, uh, ordinance change limited to as spoken, uh, as the CFO has spoken and for those purposes only. So I withdraw for that reasoning.
Okay, all right. So Counselor Holloway has withdrawn his second. The motion has died for a lack of a second. Is there a motion to amend chapter thirty-four, uh, in our city ordinance as presented tonight?
Second up.
All right, motion's been made by Counselor Day and seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner. Is there any discussion? Thank you, uh, Ms. Jordan, for taking the time to clean this up. And, you know, I wanted to just gently remind city council, you know, it's important for us to read our agenda packets before we come here. These are-
I read them.
These are, these are sent out on Thursday. There's the electronic and the in-person and our paper copy. And so if you also have questions, you can ask them beforehand, but, you know, this is very important as the city attorney and as Ms. Jordan has stated, that we need to, you know, clean these things up because they haven't been done in the past. Roll call, please.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis? Counselor Day? Counselor Stokes?
No.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes. Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, uh, moving on to R one. Uh, doesn't look like we have Dr. Hackney, but we have Ms. English.
Hopewell Public Schools budget was approved by city council on May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four with supplemental appropriations approved on September twenty-fourth and January twenty-eighth. Since then, Hopewell Public Schools has received additional federal, state, and local grants in the amount of a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. We received a grant from the John Randolph Foundation in the amount of twenty-three thousand dollars. The early childhood provisionally licensed teacher incentive grant in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. And a school-based mental health grant in the amount of a hundred and eight thousand dollars, which equals a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. So Hopewell City Public Schools requests that city council approve a resolution to amend the fiscal year twenty-five supplemental, supplemental budget appropriation as presented.
At this time, is there a motion to approve the FY twenty-five Hopewell Public Schools supplemental budget appropriation as presented?
So move.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner and seconded by Counselor Ellis. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes? Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, uh, moving on to R two, uh, Mr. Bennett?
Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. Thank you for this opportunity. I want to, um, I wanna talk to you tonight about, um, regular business item number two, which is a request to approve a resolution that would enable us to apply for a grant to the, uh, industrial revitalization fund. And I want to give you a little bit of background here. Uh, this is the first time that any of you are hearing about this, uh, except when you saw the agenda package come out. And I wanna have an explanation on, I sincerely apologize that this is so late in coming. Uh, but here's the, here's the genesis of that. We had here in, in Hopewell in the past, we've had great success with the industrial revitalization fund. Um, some of you may remember the Lam Arts, uh, project that was a recipient of the industrial revitalization fund. Um, and then a couple of years ago, we got a mixed use on Main Street grant, uh, that's being used at two oh seven um, Broadway, uh, in the old Treasure Hunt Building, uh, that Barber Construction is, is using for that. So, um, we held here on April twenty-fourth, we had a Virginia Brownfields Conference here, and some of the representatives from the Commonwealth of Virginia, they were here touring downtown, looking at the projects. And they told the, uh, the Drew Dayberry, the director of the Hopewell Downtown Partnership, they said, we do have a, a much smaller, uh, program now. Uh, this, this, this program during COVID had a lot of money in it. But, uh, but this year, they did get a, a smaller amount of money, three point eight million was available. And that's pretty much for the whole Commonwealth for people to, to, uh, send in applications for. And, uh, they said, they said, you guys should consider downtown, since you've been successful with those in the past, consider sending an application, uh, in for one of those. Uh, the challenge becomes, uh, when, when that, when that came up, and Drew came to me in, I guess, the first or second week in April, I'm, I'm sorry, in May, and said, hey, Charles, they would like for us to make an application. Um, do you have any ideas on buildings? And I, the challenge is, it's a one-for-one grant, uh, match. And we're, we're not doing, the city's not doing the, the match. We're not, we don't have any money budgeted for this, so this would have to come from the owners. And so I said, let's send an email to all of the owners of property in downtown Hopewell that's vacant or that needs to be renovated. Let's see if, one, if anybody's interested in, in submitting their building, and then if they're willing to be able to put up the match. So these are really the two things. And we sent out, we sent out a list of things. We're gonna need a budget, we're gonna need your plan, we're gonna need this and your commitment. And so we sent that out. We received two, um, uh, people who responded back. Gerald Bosch was one. He's done a couple of buildings. He has a building at the end of Main Street, uh, that he's working on now for a co-working space. He sent his budget, his information, and then Jason Baracharia with, um, who, who purchased the old social services building from the city last year. He submitted stuff as well. So Drew and I met, uh, on Tuesday of, of last week, um, to go through these because the deadline is May thirtieth. And, um, one of the, one of the challenges with, with, uh, the, the property is it has to meet the definition of blight. So the, the industrial revitalization fund money only works if it's a blighted property. And, um, there was really only one building of the two that were submitted, uh, and that was the, the old social services, uh, building at, uh, two fifty-six Caution. Gerald Bosch's building down here on Main Street, uh, it did not meet the definition of blight. It's in too good of condition. I called him and explained, uh, explained that to him, and he, he said he completely understood. The other thing, uh, that I want to just kind of, uh, remind council about is that when the money comes in, uh, from this, if, if we are awarded, um, and it's a, it's a for-profit, uh, then it has to go as a low-interest loan. It, it's not a grant that's given. The people have to pay it back. And this program here, uh, this year is prime minus two with a floor of five. So, um, in the CAF that I've sent you, there is a, there is a, um, an error that I have on the second page where it says interest rate two point five percent. That was from the twenty twenty-three. It's actually, so this year it's a five percent, uh, is the floor for that low-interest loan. So, um, I wanna think, uh, Debbie Randolph, she called me today and, and pointed out that error. She's absolutely right. So she was on top of that. And, um, this is, it's my fault for doing some, some cutting and pasting from the one we did at two oh seven. So, so that brings me to where I'm at today, uh, and what I'm asking for tonight. So what I, what I'm asking for approval tonight is, is the City of Hopewell, uh, council, which is the governing body, they have to give approval for us to make this application. Um, if you guys don't approve, then we can't make the application. There's zero taxpayer dollars involved. And the majority of all the, the work has been done with the developer, uh, Jason and, and Drew Dayberry with Downtown Partnership getting all the information together. Um, I have to, I'm the one who has the portal to upload it as a City of Hopewell, um, contact for this program. And so just like we did the Lam Arts, uh, they, they wrote the grant information, you guys blessed it, and then we uploaded it. It's very competitive. There's only three point eight million for the whole state. We don't, we don't know where we would fall in this, but sometimes they do award lesser amounts. So they ask us on the application, they say, what do you, what do you want? And then what's the least you can do? And so what, uh, the developer is, is asked essentially for the least that, that they would do would be for the mole remediation in the building from the roof leaking over the years. And I put pictures in here. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to take so much time, but I think it's important because this is the first time I'm presenting it to you. And the reason why it's the first time I'm presenting to you is I didn't know last Monday what building was gonna qualify. We, we had to give the people time to put it together. So, um, you know, actually, it's funny about like eleven o'clock, I called Drew and I said, I said, are we gonna punt and just go to next year? And then I, with the emails came in with the budgets, and I said, maybe it's a sign. So we're rolling up our sleeves and getting it done. But, um, I'm, I'm happy to answer any other questions about it. No, no taxpayer money. Um, you guys just, uh, certify two things in this resolution. One, it's blighted. And, um, and, and then you certify essentially that you're, you're giving me permission uh, to push upload on the, on the button. And I, and I will actually, I have to upload this resolution uh, before end of day Friday. So I'll ask the clerk if, if, if it's favorable tonight to sign it so we can get it uploaded. And then, then we'll see what happens. But, uh, you know, you, you never win what you don't, what you don't play. And so if, you know, if we don't go for it, then we, we're guaranteed we're not gonna get something. If it's successful, what'll happen is it'll help take that building from the blighted condition it's in and help move it uh, closer to having eleven thousand square feet available in, in downtown for, for business. And, um, we're, we're looking at medical office, uh, as a, as a use for that. Is, uh, probably most likely use for that is, is medical office, we think, because of the size and windows and accessibility and everything, so.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, resolution for the approval of the application for the grant funding loans as aforementioned by, uh, Director Bennett.
The motion has been made to approve the resolution, uh, as presented tonight, uh, and has been seconded by Counselor Harris. Is there any discussion? Uh, Counselor Harris?
Just got one question.
Sure.
Can you tell us why the, uh, Downtown Partnership was chosen as a fiscal agent versus the EDA?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. That's, that's a great question. So we have the opportunity to use several different mechanisms uh, to take money that's received and to distribute that money. And so as you may be aware, we use the Economic Development Authority to distribute incentives and like facade improvements, grants and things like that. Um, so the timing of this one, the, the Economic Development Authority only meets the first Monday of every month. And the timing of this made that very difficult. The second reason, so, because we don't meet again until this coming Monday, which is after the grant is due. And we didn't have a package together, we still don't have a package together. We're kinda like building the airplane while we fly it right now. So it's, it's, it's just the timing. But the other- But the other, the other reason I think that's important is so, um, the Hopewell Downtown Partnership, they are, are accredited Main Street organization. Um, and Virginia Main Street falls under the DHCD, which is essentially the grantor essentially that, that we're applying to. And so, um, I believe, I believe it's advantageous, it's advantageous for the application to come through our Main Street partner, accredited Main Street partner. They also already have the revolving loan set up, um, through the Small Business Diversity Bank, uh, with the Commonwealth that we're using to fu- to, to fund the two oh seven Broadway. So it's, so it, it's kinda, it's kinda like, uh, uh, we did the hard work to get that set up to do the two oh seven, and it just kinda plugs, plugs right in. Um, that's not to say that in the, in the future, another opportunity, uh, for another grant would work better through the Economic Development Authority. The timing on this one and the Main Street Partner Association is the, um, that, and Drew Dayberry, the executive director, he's, he's doing most of the work, like typing this, you know, up and gathering the information. Sure.
Okay, seeing no other lights, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis? Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Alright, Ms. Jordan, bring us home.
Good evening again. This is a resolution to move the, um, capital reserve funds that was allocated in twenty-four, one point five, five hundred thousand of that to be allocated towards sewer capital, queen and pump station, and sewer street repairs. Um, back in twenty twenty-three, the city had allocated funds for, for specific sewer projects in our LGIP. In April of this past year, we adopted a reimbursement resolution so that any money we pay towards fixing these projects, we can revert, reimburse ourselves through the general fund through our LGIP investment accounts that was allocated specifically for these projects. This is a resolution to amend the capital reserve fund in the amount of one point five to take five hundred thousand of that and designate those funds towards the queen and pump station and sewer street repairs, as, as well as other sewer capital projects, and then the city will reimburse ourselves.
Okay.
Wait a minute, the, uh, I got you until you get back to the end part. You're talking about the reimbursement of the entire money and then using a five hundred thousand to the-
No, so we will pay upfront, and then we will reimburse ourselves from the LGIP money that was set aside specifically for these projects in twenty twenty-three.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution for the, uh, city council of the City of Hopewell, Virginia, amending the FY twenty-five capital budget as presented tonight?
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Day and seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner. Is there any discussion? Uh, Counselor Holloway?
I want clarification. The five hundred thousand dollar portion, where is it? To the, you know, pump. Explain that portion.
It's to start the, um, queen and pump station design phase, as well as the fixing. I, I believe the queen and pumps are still currently down along with Mansion Hill, but it's a start to design phase.
So I understand that portion. Why are we not allocating the rest of the funds to the other appropriated things? And I know the Public Works Director and so forth are not here tonight, but they were-
This was from his request for the other sewer capital projects that are existing as well.
Right, that's what I was about to say, because he just asked, but I thought it was a little bit more than five hundred thousand, I thought he was-
It is, but for us to start right now, we need to be able to pay this two fifties to start the design piece of it and some other projects, or two hundred some thousand as well for, um, a vendor. I don't wanna say the vendor's name out loud, but to start this process, and then we will reimburse ourselves, and then that's how we'll just keep going, moving forward.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was about to say. So we, I just wanna make sure he had enough for the remainder of the- Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And I just wanna say, uh, thank you, Ms. Jordan, uh, Mr. Rogers, and then also, uh, Mr. Campbell, uh, for doing this housekeeping and cleaning up, um, because quite frankly, this project should have already been done by now. Um, you know, being approved, um, you know, over, you know, eighteen, nineteen months ago, it, it should have already been done. And, you know, unfortunately, you know, we've had, um, you know, leaks, uh, from there, um, that, um, you know, could have been prevented. Um, but I really do appreciate you guys working hard to making sure that we clean up the paperwork, that we're getting this in design phase, and we can get this going as quickly as possible, so we don't have any more sewage leaks. Alright, uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes? Counselor-
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, alright, meeting has been adjourned.